Okay. We'll call this meeting to order. We need a motion to reconvene open session, please. Thank you, Mrs. Saharsky, and second by that. All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you very much. Welcome to our board meeting. If you'll stand, we'll say the pledge of allegiance together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. We have some special recognitions this evening. We had some teachers that received the Hillsborough R3 Foundation grant. And they're listed if you want to look at them up there on the board. But we had the eighth grade teachers, Jackie Koscherek and Kristen.
Merrily.
Merrily, okay. And Cheryl Tilly and Erin.
Faked.
Faked, in the junior high. And for Google Cardboard and student space makeovers. And Nicole Heider and Vina Holland in seventh grade science. In the elementary, we had Katie Appleton for third grade for Chromebooks for special ed. Middle school, Jeannie Literest for some STEM activities with Bristlebots. And the primary had Ashley Pack. She's the music teacher and colors for kids. So we congratulate them for their grants. We also had some scholarships awarded. They're listed on the screen as well. But Dr. Freeman, you want to talk about those $250 scholarships? Oh, those are for the, sorry. Is that for the foundation as well?
Yes. The foundation award for our students Alexis Fudge, Faith and Lizden, Lindsay Barton, and Sidney Haddix. Each received $250 from the foundation.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I'm sure they're very excited about that. So congratulations, ladies. Dr. Tulley, you want to talk about the Girls on the Run?
Sure. Elementary had 44 girls that participated this season with 14 coaches. They were part of the larger Girls on the Run movement, including almost 4,000 girls and 1,400 coaches across 23 countries. Girls on the Run is recognized by the National After School Association as one of the nation's most influential in health and wellness programs available to young girls. And just last, May 13th, Saturday, they joined many Girls on the Run teams from around the area downtown for the St. Louis Girls on the Run. So it was awesome and made a great job.
Very good. Congratulations to that group. We have some sport news. Maybe that Mr. Moreno will share with us? Must do with archery. Okay, archery golf. Archery, can you go over here and read it?
No way.
Okay, they took sixth place at the national competition in Louisville, Kentucky. Actually, you should be the one sharing this. And then, Mr. Moreno, I would love to share with you about our golf. Congratulations to high school golfer Blake Hammond, who finished 46th in the state golf tournament, shooting a 165 over two days.
Amazing. Very good. Congratulations. Then I want to recognize our very own Kylie Outlaw for scoring a 35 on her ACT. That's incredible. And last, I personally, and I'm sure other board members will agree with me, last Thursday was a rather long day. It was full of interesting events. But I want to thank all of our staff, our teachers, our administrators, and all of those, bus drivers, everybody involved. It was a difficult day, and you guys handled it with flying colors. I've seen so many positive things on Facebook, heard positive reports. And I want to thank you, and the board wants to thank you as well for all that you did during that difficult day. And you represented Hillsborough in a most positive way. Everybody was really grateful for your extra efforts going above and beyond. So thank you. Thank you, guys. Okay. Let's get down to business, then. We'll start with the items that need action by consent. Pardon me? So any questions or concerns about items on the consent agenda?
I just have one question. How will the weigh days reflect them in SIF report for attendance?
The way.
Yes.
So we aren't seeing anything?
Right, so you won't lose attendance hours or data on that. Now, the way it works at the state, they're going to forgive you if you don't have to make them up, but you're probably not going to receive compensation for doing it.
Okay, any other questions? All right, so I need a motion, then, to approve the items on the consent agenda as presented. Thank you, Mrs. Saharsky. Second? Did she? I didn't hear. Okay. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, raise your hand, please. All right, very good. All right, that gets us to our reports for the evening. We'll start with the superintendent's report.
All right, we have several reports. I know Mark Imjes is here, so I want to give them plenty of time to talk with you. I'm not going to go through a lot of things tonight, but I do want to point out just a couple of items. First, the Hillsborough Hawks website is up and running. So if you pull up hsd3.org, and it goes to the old website, just hit the refresh button, and you will have the new website in front of you. Actually, I like it. It seems very user-friendly. Why don't you, can you minimize that? And click on the new website, refresh, and let the board see what's left. The website, the way that it's working, see if you type in, it'll be, say, wrong address. So you'll have to type in hsd3.org, and let it think. There we go. So that's the new website. You'll see the menu bars and schools across the top. Erin, can you kind of click on that menu for me? And you'll see our live feed, which communicates with our app, and kind of some of the things going on, summer school. To get a little information to this, you will see a little bit about the live feed. Also, on the menu bar, there are just different items, whether it's events, news, staff. If you click on staff, this is interesting. It'll actually give you all the staff emails, phones, if you want to get in touch with them. So this is a little more user-friendly than our actual past menu dropdown. So, and you can click on that, and click schools, whether you want to go district high school. And you'll see that the interface is going to be the same, but the pictures are different. Again, this is the same format as the app. Now, if you scroll to the bottom, you'll see, again, live feed, news. But here are some other quick links that also might be important to folks. We have information down there if you want to click on. So take your time, peruse that. Again, if you have the app on your phone, it's going to look like this. So they communicate back and forth. So static content will be the same, such as the word news, but all of new, fresh content being uploaded, we're working toward a process to keep information up there current relevance so folks can kind of scroll through there and see what's going on. Again, if you go back to the menu and click on, excuse me, go to schools, Erin, and click on district. The district page has a little more information. Like at the bottom, you're going to see, scroll on down for me, Erin. All right, on the left-hand side, district. I'm trying to see, to get to board policies. Oh, we got to go up to the menu, I believe. And after you click menu at the district side, you see all this extra information on the bottom, which is Board of Education, your policies. And that will actually hyperlink you to MSBA. So we have our information on here. It's just in a little bit different format. Departments in the middle there, whether you want to click on athletics activities, also health services, nursing, human resources. All that information is contained in there. And basically, we took what was at the top of the old website, and it's kind of embedded toward the bottom. The staff page, you have staff, staff forums, Google Sheets. All that information is in there for our staff to look at. So take some time and peruse that. If you have the app, take an opportunity to work on that and go through the app and learn some information on it as well. So, hold on a minute. The breakfast and lunch menus. Thanks, Kim. Cell phones are good, too. Kim Jackson just texted me and said, "I've got the breakfast and lunch menu on the app for summer school." All right, thanks, Kim. So in case people are wanting to know what's going on with summer school lunches, have the app, pull it open there. That's going to be a great resource for our staff. So just a little bit about that. Next, all right, Erin, I'm supposed to wait back. Thank you. One of the things under the revised Missouri statute is the 170.315 that says that all your staff are going to be trained for active shooter, armed intruder. If you remember, we normally do this in December. And one of the things that we want to kind of hear from our staff is, man, it's really depressing to think about this right before Christmas. But also, with the change in the calendar, it allowed us to have one more PD day. Correct, Heath, there on the front of school, which allowed us to move this there. What we're really striving to move toward is active shooter, train the trainer. And we wanted to take our staff, a couple from each building, and have them physically trained with Tier One tactical. But it was in July, and we felt it wasn't a good enough time to plan. So we want to stay with our current plan this year, but next year, next July, 2018, start talking with our staff, who would like to go and be trained active shooter. And what they would do is, one thing about Tier One that we like is they physically bring trainers to each one of the school buildings. And what the train the trainer model would do would allow us to have a couple of employees assist them, where they would still send one person instead of sending two to three to four to train per building. So that's coming up. I want to bring your attention to that. We did have a slight increase on this. We started out our first year at 6,000. Last year was 7,000 because they added the, help me out, first aid component, correct, Heath? And so we have, this is our Tier Three training, which is going to cost a little bit more. So, and I do want to say something here. I haven't, I don't know if I mentioned this to the board, but the junior high, during the lockdown, one of our staff members had stepped outside the door to answer them across the hall. When the lockdown hit, the students physically locked the door, barricaded the door, and wouldn't let anyone in. And because when they heard lockdown, they believed there was an armed intruder in the building. They took care of themselves, and they would not open the door until law enforcement come to their door and told them they could open it. So we're very pleased that our kids took that initiative. Praise Heath's building, and all of our administrators who are working for kids in situations like this. But that's when you know, that when it counts, that they're going to be able to take care of themselves. So we're excited about that, and I appreciate Heath and his building. So as we move forward, and this is kind of what I've been sharing with folks, this was an opportunity for us to evaluate our processes, our procedures, and see how we continue to improve to keep kids safe. So I wanted to bring that to your attention because it's a little different than what we normally do. All right, one more thing, actually, two. The NE, our teacher evaluation system. John and I kind of visited about this process, and we felt it was just a little bit late to try to evaluate. This year, we wanted to switch. Currently, we have Frontline, which formerly was, what, Aesop, John?
Oh, it's still Aesop.
Still Aesop, but Frontline is the overall umbrella. And they can have a teacher evaluation system, which would allow us to link everything to one particular unit, whether it be information of student, our teacher absences, evaluations, all that would be in one hub. But it was a little more expensive at 13,000. So we decided, since NE was going to keep the same amount, and we didn't have enough time to migrate away from that or even evaluate if we wanted to, the same with that was probably the best for one more year to give us an opportunity to visit with our administrators and our staff to determine NE effectiveness. That price stayed the same, it's $10,250. And that's going to be reflected in your budget again if it had no increase. I just wanted to talk to you about that. Lastly, one of the things that we've been working on for the past two weeks, Mr. Moreno, I appreciate his effort in this, as well as Vernon Jones, was the independent turf testing. And we actually have members of Shaw Sports Floors here with us. We have Jamison here with us. And they'd like to have a little bit of your time to talk to you about the results of the turf and some things that they found out. So if it pleases the board, Jamison, we have a few minutes. Oh, and sorry, Matt Hicks. Sorry, man.
Well, I think I met all of you earlier in this process. We're still extremely excited we built this project for you guys. It was great to see the track meet, the first track meet you guys had. We hit the date and killed the date for you guys. We were very, very happy about that. We actually built this project in 22 working days. We had, like, I think it was 14 inches of rain in the same timeframe where we built this. I don't know if anybody noticed that or not, but that sends us back a little bit. But we worked a lot of nights, a lot of weekends, and we're really excited about this project. It is a great-looking facility, and it's a great playable facility. And then I was going to let Matt talk.
Yeah, just so specific, there were 37 possible working days, including Saturdays. 15 days we lost to rain, so 22 days that we actually could work. 14 inches of rain, that's over eight inches more than would be average in that time. On April 1st, Saturday, we sent our guys home in the morning and told them they got to come back at 1:00 because there was too much moisture in the track. They thought it was an April Fool's joke. But it was true. So we came back, and we worked into the evening. And on the 11th of April, we had turf installation crew worked past midnight into 2:00 a.m., Eddie's there with the lights on. So we all pulled together to get this thing done for you. We're very proud of it, so we hope you are, too.
One of the things we were excited to get done for you guys was so you could have graduation on field. That was kind of the goal. That's what everybody talked about up front. There were some things that we had to come clean up the next day, as you guys are probably aware of. If you're going to do this in the future, what I would recommend is putting plywood down under the chairs and under the stage, and then putting some of the remnant green turf over it if you're going to do it on the field. That's kind of a big compromise because it'll spread the load of the actual stage and the actual chairs. Because the chairs have a very high point load, and they can sometimes actually affect the turf. The G-Max results, I don't know if, did you guys pass up? Okay. So the G-Max testing results came back as an average, I believe, 113 is the test. That's very good in our world. We try and shoot for somewhere between 95 and 120. And somewhere between 110 and 115 is perfect.
G-Max.
Oh, what is G-Max? I'm sorry.
That's your world, too.
I'm sorry.
It's the concussion test.
It's basically how hard your head is to the turf. It's a hammer test that drops just like that, and it measures the recoil. It was designed by the crash test dummies on how hard the head and the dash. And it was transferred into this industry because there's a lot of head and turf interactions. We've really tried to shoot between 115, or like right about the 115 number. And it hit 113, which is great news for us. The average infill came back at 1.53 inches. What that means is you have a firm, fast, and safe synthetic turf system. And we fully believe that that is the best facility that you can buy. It's actually a little bit more infill than what St. Mary's had, so you're even further on that side. We also got the independent testing results and the Shaw Sports Turf Testing Results. Shaw tested the turf 30 times before it left, every five rolls. Correct? And we have the aggregate tests. The aggregate test came back somewhere around 44.98 ounces per square yard, somewhere around there after 30 tests, which was higher than some of the accusations that I've been asked to talk about previously. I think that was a 41 ounce minimum that they were talking about.
I think so, 41 ounce.
Well, every test that we had, the lowest test we had was actually the blue. That was on an independent testing. The blue came back at 42.67, I think it is. What that also means is Shaw and we are not completely 100% happy with that because we should be somewhere around the 45-ounce range. And we, you can't really tell. I brought a blue, and I couldn't read, and you look at them. And if anybody here can tell me the difference, I will happily.
Give us a tip.
Yeah. You can have a job, and you'll probably be in Dalton because you need a microscope to tell the difference. So what happened was is the blue fiber itself was a smaller denier. What a denier means is it's 9,000 square meters or some have abnormal distance, and they weigh it in grams. What that means is really just blade width under a microscope, okay? The blue is actually a little bit smaller width than the green. They use the same amount of blades and the same amount of stitch rate, so it has the same feel and the same look, but it doesn't match the weight that we want it to match. So we're here tonight to say it didn't match the green. It's still within tolerance. The SDC gives a 10% leeway either way. As the Synthetic Turf Council, sorry.
Now, 10% is the 10% from the 46.
10% from 46. So they would go to 42, and they would go up to 50, saying it's a manufacturer's variation that's acceptable. Shaw and ourselves, we limit ourselves to 5%. So that's why we're standing here in front of you today. One, say that we're very grateful for the project. And two, say this isn't what we wanted to put in completely on the blue. We've proposed a couple of options. I don't know if that's been.
Go ahead.
Okay, one is we do nothing. That's a bad answer for everybody. Two, we leave it in place. We give a credit back to you guys for certain work. Or three, we rip out all the blue and put it back in. There's nothing wrong with it. All options come with an eight-year warranty. There's nothing physically wrong with it. Most of the NFL stadiums have a 34-ounce face weight with the same type of blade. So we're standing behind it, no matter what. We would like to see what you guys want to do. We're happy to do any of those three options. That's the only three that we really see as viable options for anybody. But we don't believe that cutting the field open is a good answer because it's a very good product, as it sits. It really is. And I'm very proud of what it is. It's just not what we want it to be. It's just outside of our tolerance. It's still within the Synthetic Turf Council's tolerance. I think it was 0.4 ounces out of tolerance. So.
Yeah, and to give you kind of a feeling and throwing these numbers around so you understand whether or not you all are or not, but I'll kind of tell you. That way that we're looking at is the number of ounces in a square yard. It's a three foot by three foot square. So you're talking about less than one ounce in a three foot by three foot square. So it's a very, very small amount. And to give you an idea, for Shaw, we've maybe installed thousands of fields. And this is literally the first time this has ever happened. This is so far out of bounds for us to happen that it's changing a lot of our processes when it comes to testing and things like that because, just because of that variation between the green and the blue never has happened like it does before. So it's just barely outside of our tolerances. And like I said, our tolerances are a lot tighter than anybody else's from the SDC's perspective. So it's just, we don't feel good about it because we're not providing you what we promised. But, so, we'll do whatever, whatever we have to do.
Did we find this on your testing, or the independent testing?
The independent came back on the blue.
Well, is the reason that you haven't found that before, and we're the only one, because no one has done an independent test before?
I believe it was in the blue. And that's why, that's why I couldn't, that's why I had to call.
Can you speak on that?
Yeah, no, we do probably, third, half of our fields are independently tested, and that's just a kind of request of the owners or whatnot. In addition to any time new styles are created, we independently test them all to ensure that we can produce to those specifications as well.
Now, do you do your own independent testing? Or, I mean, do you do your own testing, or do you send it out to a company?
We do, so both. Every field that's produced, we do our own internal testing. But the way our tests go, sometimes, when you're doing every fifth roll, just depending on the sequences of the rolls that are being produced, we may not, we may not have gotten a roll that had blue in it.
So you do your own testing?
Yes.
So TSI did ours, correct?
TSI, there's two main testing companies in Dalton, in Calvin, which is where every turf comes from, no matter who you buy it from. And they, the green and the white testing results that they had showed better than the Shaw internal testing results by over a full ounce. So that was really reaffirming. It was just the blue that we didn't like. Again, it hits the national tolerance. But that's not what we want to give you, is the national tolerance. We want to give you our tolerance. We want to give you. Well, we still believe that the product's going to stand up for its lifetime and beyond. And, but what we want to do is, since we are on tolerance, we want to, in good faith, give you some sort of credit, whether it's the 7,500 for the sand pick covers that we did. You know, we'll cover those. And we just want to make sure that we're just open and honest with you, giving you all the facts and telling you, hey, we want to make this right. And we want to, but we're standing behind the product for the long haul. And we want to be a partner with Hillsborough for as long as I'm.
What were the results?
The green and the white.
45. So the white? So the green and the white came back at 45.
So the blue is only H in the middle on themselves.
Correct. It's correct.
And the white was 45.73, and what was the?
45.6.
45.6. And the turf was 46 ounces, so four tenths and three tenths of an ounce to get to 46. The industry standard is 10% either way. Yours is 5% either way.
Correct, correct.
So, look at the blue. What was the blue again?
The blue was an average of 42.66.
42.66.
Is that the concussion value you're talking about?
No.
Okay, that's completely different.
That was the infill, and I wanted to say. This is, this is if you were to, if you had a full square yard of this. You shaved off air old fiber and weight. That's what basically.
Do you have something you needed to add, Mr. Moreno?
I just want to say that Vernon knows that nothing but upfront the entire time. And in language terms, what they're telling you is, this meets the industry standard. It is higher than some claims that have been made against us that said we had no better than a 41-ounce turf. We blow the 41-ounce turf on all the testing, no matter what. With that being said, it just doesn't meet their standard. They have a higher standard, so this is different than some of the things we do around here. We have standard fulfillment, we have standards we set higher. They set a higher standard for themselves.
They're always standard.
Yep, and so their purpose of being here tonight is just to say, hey, it didn't meet our standard. What can we do to make it right? And I applaud them for that, and I thank them for that. And I think the board and the community are probably appreciative transparency, to be honest with you. Yeah, they didn't have to.
So can you talk us through the options again for the board? What options are you laying out?
Option one I'm rolling out, which is, do we do nothing? We still give you a day and your warranty. We write off on sunset. I'm saying that's not on the table. Option two is, we cover the pole vault or the long jump. Sand pick covers, which I don't know if everybody here knows how those came about. We reused or which is that you were going to have to tear apart and throw away as sand pick covers. I don't know if that was relayed. They're shaking their head, so.
Yeah, we did.
So we got to use something out of that and make it good. We can credit that back to the school. That's an option. We still give you a day and your warranty. This still has the exact same warranty. Or we go out and replace the blue.
But you're not recommending that.
I wouldn't do it.
Now, the reason being is because it's sewn in now. And if you had to replace all the blue, it's not just the end zones. And if you had to replace all the blue, it's not just the end zones, you're going to take the H.
It will have no seams.
I'm not wrong, the H is already kind of glued in, but you're going to have to cut the stitching off the width of the field of the blue end zone.
Which I would not.
And you cannot sew it back. It has to be glued, correct?
If I was in your shoes, I would not do that. It has to be glued, yes.
Call that frankincense. You don't want to franken.
And I guess is that tells you don't have a factory cut to sew to stitch to to make it smooth?
It could be done. It's just it gives you more places that it can fail. Now, it can fail still under warranty and it'll still get fixed because it's still an eight-year warranty.
Non-pro rated.
Non-pro rated warranty. But each of them still carry the same warranty regardless of what we do. Does that make sense? I see some head shaking, so that's good. And tuckling. It's a little too far on the circuit there. But if it was my mind and it's my school district, I would say absolutely, we'll take the credit. It's a fine field. We're extremely pleased with it. It's one on our literature. It looks great. Plays great. I've already had multiple school districts in the area call us and say, you want that? So I'm very proud of it. It's just it's not exactly what we as a group wanted. And that's why we're here.
Well, I guess a better word is expect.
Yeah. It's just outside of our tolerance.
And yeah, it's not what you expected and that expectation is so very close to what it is.
Right, yes. And it's re-looked.
I also know how long the alley went, batting cages and various other.
And Matt could probably talk on that more than I can because he gives all these things to me. Kind of like the logo that we had on the sideline, I found out from this guy at the board meeting the last time I was here. He donated it to them. Go ahead, Matt.
I wanted it. I wanted the field, okay? I wanted it. So and we also have to, we did have, luckily we had a couple extra roll of blue at the yard and we brought them down and got them installed in your batting cages for as well as in Georgia. So I think that turned out pretty cool.
Yes.
So I mean, we're, we're, when we do, when we do a project with anyone, it's a long-term relationship that we're after. It's not, hey, we're done, see you around. It's, we want to be standing by your side for the long haul. So that's, that's what we're here to do, to tell you. But we want to make sure that you're happy and that we're in good faith saying, hey, we're a little shy of our tolerance, but here's what we want to do to make it right.
And from Shaw's perspective, we just echo what Matt's saying. We just wanted to be upfront and honest with you and not try to cover things up and, you know, not everybody's going to do that. But Shaw, our perspective.
He literally just got off the plane from Georgia just to get here. So he's leaving.
Yeah. So I mean, we just want to make sure that you understand it's just, you know, it's right there, but we want to be honest and make sure you understood what you're getting. For comparison's sake, all the ounce weight information, we often did build, installed fields that are thirty-two, thirty-four ounces. And we, not on purpose, not accidentally. If that's a requirement of that school system or whoever, we will go that low and we maintain warranties no matter what. As long as we can build a field, we warranty the field, period. So.
They won't place the product, they won't warranty.
We're actually bidding a project at S I U V next week that's a forty-four ounce turf, the same fibers, but the specification comes from forty-four. And Shaw's been bidding with us and so are other manufacturers and it's going to make your warranty.
Well, I appreciate all of your efforts and the field does look beautiful. Lots of compliments. I don't know if we need to make a motion on which option to accept or do we just verbally?
I think you just, I mean, Mr. Moreno, what's your recommendation?
That was my next question.
I don't think you need to go down though.
Okay.
Our recommendation is option two. I appreciate the fact that they take option one off the table and that they, they give it, but it's not really an option. Option two seems to be the most logical. If any of you have been on that field, you can attest what it feels like and what it looks like. Option three scares me a lot. And I am comfortable enough with them and with Shaw and with everybody, I would stand behind it with them. I'm that confident that we don't need to take that out. It meets the industry standard. It exceeds the industry standard. It just doesn't meet their standard. So our best bet in my mind is we go with option two. We improve our facility. We know everything that's going on. Everyone's very transparent with one another and we move forward with our amazing facility.
And the blue is only in the end zone area and in the H.
End zones, the H in the middle and part of the border around.
Hopefully there's a lot of action in those end zones though.
Yes.
For one team. For one team.
Well, it depends on which course. So that would be my hope.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have a different thought as far as his recommendation? Everybody good with that recommendation?
There's the answer.
Okay. I think there's your answer then.
Thank you, gentlemen. I guess the last part of time is that's it. I'm going to ask you two questions.
Okay. So we'll move on then to arch images. They have a report presentation for us this evening. It's nice to see you.
Can you play with me, gentlemen? We will get back to that presentation. Roy's going to hand out your copies of the presentation we're going to be going over this evening. First off, congratulations on the ending of another successful school year. As a parent of four boys, I can tell you, we're already hoping for summer to be over. Start that school year back up, folks. Just joking, but congratulations on that. Also, it's my first opportunity to be back in front of the board since the successful Proposition H. So congratulations to all of you and your staff and the facilities and the steering group on that successful bond issue. And Dr. Forman asked me to come here this evening along with my associate Roy Gangin and kind of talk a little bit about what we feel are the next steps after that successful vote from our perspective with the architects and the planners. So I put together a brief presentation on just some of those next steps that I think we can take as the board begins looking forward with how we implement. So quick agenda, how do we prioritize? How do we select the projects that the board wishes to move forward with? I want to talk a little bit as we get into this about, I've categorized our projects into more of an immediate, short and long term. That's not from a need perspective, that's the duration of time it takes to accomplish them. I think that's a good way for us to look at these as we go forward. A little bit about our next steps into planning and design, moving towards ultimately bidding and permitting projects and then obviously into construction and implementation. Just continuing the process you guys are familiar with on normal projects. Also want to speak to process wise, our needs to establish participants that will carry forward with us in this design and planning process, how we're going to establish meeting schedules with those various participants. And then some particular needs that are going to become apparent very quickly that will have some costs associated with them, that being civil site surveys that we're going to need to sell the area school for rebuilding additions. We're going to tap the information that the district has now, but I can tell you from our experience, probably going to need some new additional information updated before we start building out of the ground any of these new facilities. We just need that accurate information to start with and that usually starts our process, that survey process. Then with that, some geotechnical soil testing that might be required. Those are kind of services that we're going to bring proposals to the board from outside groups, experts that do that work, present them to you, give our recommendation, only in the areas where we think that they're needed for us and for the board from our construction and liability standpoint. So those are just a few of the things we'll talk about in that evening. Hello, with a new battery for this. Okay. You've seen this diagram before. We use this throughout the bond issue in our public presentations and a few times with the board, but I wanted to review it again and change a few of this. The process, as we mentioned in our public forums, is ongoing. We now have a successful funding mechanism. I'm using the value of twelve million dollars. We're successful with that. We have developed and the board has reviewed a couple of times our matrix of projects or our needs. Previously, we talked that we had values associated with that matrix of needs based on past master plans and in our work over the past several months. We've categorized those into learning and wellness, code compliance, security and technology categories. We've put some values to those that were magnitude values and we all knew going into the bonding that we had more need than the bond was going to fund. So at some point when we were successful, we offered to the public, we have a lot of need, help us, help us solve some of these issues that are pending for us. We now have that funding mechanism, so what we need to do is we need to select those tier projects, top tier projects out of our matrix to move forward with, to implement, you know, the best value. Some new factors to consider, actually they're not new, they're always there, it's just it's time to think about those. How we're going to help you select those groupings of projects is a lot of factors, but some key ones. Economy of scale. Construction market, the value or the number of projects that you build generates value. The larger the value, the larger the project, usually you get a better value or cost per square foot are, you get more for your money if you're building more, right? I think we're all familiar with that of our houses. The bigger the project, it's more cost, but the cost per square foot is less. So we need to consider that when we're packaging these projects. On-site activity, I mentioned as we were developing the matrix, when we're at the junior high doing some projects, even if a project is not a top tier project, but we're affecting the area that we're in, it's a good time for us to make that improvement while we're there on-site in that area so that we don't come back in a short period of time and disrupt what we just put in. I think we went over that in our last session. There's several occasions where that's going to take place and so we need to take that into account as we package these projects. Constructability and disruption, those are fairly obvious. We've got a lot of renovation type projects that are going to have to be scheduled and prioritized when we don't have students and staff in the building. So our summer windows and our Christmas break windows come into play and I'll go over that in a bit. But also constructability, again, how do we best take advantage of a contractor on-site building in a certain area and get as much done as we can in that area so that we get a better dollar value for it, less construction timeframe, thus less disruption? Because in this type of work, the amount of time it takes them to build it costs us dollars and we don't see that in the bricks and mortar. We see it on the time cards. So we're very diligent about planning these projects so we cut their timeframe down, help them be efficient through our designs. It all starts with the selection and the packaging of projects. So that's why this is important. And then hitting the proper bidding and construction windows. That's going to be critical to us again so that we're spending every dollar we can on the bricks and mortar and the improvements, not in missing appropriate times or when people are busy or we've missed a good construction window opportunity. And sometimes when you meet seventeen inches of rain, there is no good construction window as these guys just mentioned. But we try and pick times for them to build, especially additions, where we're not the cold or we're not the wet. Those do slow us down. So with that, I put together a quick schedule, very diagrammatic, where on the left, the three categories I've talked about, immediate, short term and long term. So if we take, assume we're at June one here, we've got the rest of two seventeen and two thousand and eighteen, we have a couple of opportunities, construction windows. You're familiar with these, you've dealt with these before. There's a short period of time over Christmas break when everybody goes home for a while. We have a very short window to accomplish some very small projects, but we can take advantage of that timeframe and we should look at those for some of the work that we even have slated on our matrix. Second time will be right now, next year. Last bus off, contractor moves on. You get what he can get done in a window before first bus comes back. That's always our school window of opportunity and we need to be prepared to let them be mobilized and ready to go May, who knows, the last day of school last year. Anybody?
No.
May something.
No.
That's right. So that they can get every ounce of work done that we can during that summer. Now, those are the projects that fit in those construction timeframes. We have some projects in our matrix, some of the additional classroom spaces, that don't fit those timeframes. But the good news for those major additions, classroom space, is that they're not going to disrupt us. We can have school activity going on, we butt our new construction up, we don't open that up until it's done and we occupy. So with those major classroom additions at the various locations, we can take advantage of a longer window and a little bit more freedom for when we pull the trigger on those projects. But in all cases, and you'll see in the matrix that we're going to go over next, we have kind of taken a stab at selecting a batch of projects as an example that we want to review in detail tonight. But for instance, in our immediate projects, there's three identified projects, the elementary school switch gear, the junior high gymnasium HVAC and junior high gymnasium bleachers. We think those fall into a category that if we start a design process here in June, we complete our design process, get board approval, we can go out for permits, bidding and mobilization, that's what B P and M stand for, permitting, bidding and mobilization by a contractor and be ready to implement those projects over possibly a Christmas break. If the contractor's ready to go and we unplug the switch gear, we move it off the pad, we plug the new one in, no one knows the difference when they come back to school.
Can I ask you something?
Sure.
I thought the idea with the switch gear was to move it into the building interior where the weight room is.
That's as long as we select that project to allow that space to be available for that. So some of this tonight, I'm kind of preempting some of those interweaving discussions we have to have with, when we make that decision, that project as an example here in the immediate may have to fall out to a short term or a long term. You're exactly right. But that's one great example of how these projects interweave each other. I can't put switch gear in a building when I don't get the weight room out of there. That's why I want to make sure we package this and then our damages will come back with a detailed schedule by projects that are selected, that we can show you how this will work in sequence, you know, with it. But that's a great question. In examples of a short term, we have a lot of schools that have ADA restroom upgrades. So and we have several that have entry access upgrades, nurse station administration remodels or relocations to help with the secure entrances to move up, that we've already identified as needs. Those short-term projects can be accomplished over a summer period. We know for a fact, we can fix the entries, we can relocate some, remodel some classrooms, move the administration, we can do those in a two and a half, three month period of time, get properly organized. So we start to put those in a category and aim for a summer construction period and we back off that with our permitting, bidding and mobilization, gives us a design time. I can tell you in the second line, we don't need that much time to design those level of projects, but we can't put them out on the street too early because we can't hold our prices for longer than thirty to sixty days. So we really work backwards and we will schedule those projects accordingly, get the staff and the board approvals, based on which ones are selected in here. But we're aiming for a summer, next summer construction period. In the third category, the long term, are our classroom additions, our primary school, junior high and then junior high waivering classroom additions, where we've got exterior ground up construction happening. In this case, we've got a design time that we think is accurate for that level of work, an accurate permitting, bidding and mobilization period, and then starting a construction period here first of April, which means they can get some things mobilized and get working because we're not disrupting classes, we're outside building foundations in a corner of the building and we're not occupying. And then if we plan this correctly, there's the potential that even those classroom additions could be ready for start of school in two thousand and eighteen. So this gives you an idea, properly packaged and pulled together in the planning process, how quickly we can move with a series of projects, you know, in looking at the different complexities. I wanted to give that almost fast track example to you, but it's realistic of what we can accomplish, you know, at this point in time with that level of funding. Now, over here on the left, as I mentioned, our first, one of our categories is we have to reach a construction value. Right now, we have a twelve million dollar bond value, but that's not what we can spend on construction because there's other costs associated with that. because there's other costs associated with that bond, i.e. the property that you've talked about, Dr. Corman. If that's selected as a final, that reduces that amount we have. There's other bond costs, there's interest costs, there's other costs associated with that, there's costs for us to draw the plans, some legal costs, that all start to take that 12 down, along with other discretionary and what the board wishes to do. What I'm interested in is your architect, your planner, is where does that 12 go down to? And we need to, we need to come to that because that helps us then pick those projects. Because I know the value of projects, we've got to come down from the 12, and then I can meet you with the amount of work we can accomplish for what's available to construction. And then that's what I design to budget, is that number. So we've got some homework to do on both our sides to see what is that available construction dollars that we're going to put on the table, and then I can help select those projects that meet that, and you guys can review those projects and make sure it's covering the areas that you think are most important.
So how do you come to fees as far as designing and planning? Because, I mean, to me, as we're trying to come to a number of actual dollars for construction dollars, how do you come about, because you're not going to know what I'm drawing, I'm not going to start drawing for a few months, so how are you going to actually get by that on your dollars? Because we've already paid bond attorneys, getting the bonds approved, the bond stamped, certified, all that's done. So we have to determine as far as fees from our images, and as well as when you go out for permits, what those costs are, how do you, how do you plan that, I guess is my question?
Well, we have, we're on the front row here. We develop a, I'm sorry, it's dark, and I don't handle some electronics. This is kind of depicting what I was talking about with that green arrow. If that, at the bottom, we have a $12 million number, that in the end would cost you pay that you're privating to that, is probably on the category here. There's probably categories here you're never going to fill in. That's fine. This is from our experience, what we've seen in school districts, pay money out of their bonds for. Not everyone's the same. We, as just the architect, are mostly interested in this blue box up here, which is construction, the estimates of construction, our fees, which I can tell you what my fees are. And so if I manage this for you, that's what you hire me for. But I know if I don't help you manage this, I'm going to be over budget. I don't want to be over budget. So we need to go down these categories, we need to fill in the numbers you have, bring some suggestions, what you might be considering out of that. So if I can come up here and put a number that says it's $10 million. Greg, from your matrix, that added up to $18 million. This is the matrix you've all seen. What are the $10 million, what are the projects we should do and why, based on some of that criteria I've had over, constructability, onsite, my best, you know, suggestion to you? Then we draw and manage to that. As with any construction, the hard numbers of those projects, what they're going to physically cost, comes when on bid day. Because that's a market-driven number by a contractor who's not in this room. We're here to help you estimate what that is, but the market will set that number. We'll periodically up our estimates, we'll have contingencies built in to our estimates so that as we get more information, our contingency goes down, and we're tracking that number. That's why this bottom line upfront is so important. Without that, it's a moving target. Ultimately, all the money's going to be spent. We just need to put it in the right bucket, and none of these lines up here in the blue are zeros. So it's an ongoing process, Dr. Corman. And for the board, we don't have any plan drawn yet. We have concepts, we've shown you boxes where they are. We have a whole lot of meetings to meet with these, the staff at those locations, we have surveys to go get. The information that we had pulled together before is just that, is to give a general idea of what we want to accomplish, what our needs are, and here's what we think those values are. Now it's time to get down and roll our sleeves up and manage to that number. Because if you remember, that number of 12 was based on what we felt we could get, you know, what we thought we could raise. We knew we had more need than that. Now we have to do the homework of putting the best projects that meet, you know, that number. But we've given everyone a general idea of what those opportunities are. That's kind of the process, and then, you know, how we're going to go about scheduling and moving forward and implementing this. The matrix that you have within your packet tonight is the same matrix we have in our public forums. The only thing we've done tonight is we've added the dollar values in that were based on the past master planning effort that was done, that you folks have paid for, for those Those are actually 2014 numbers. In our estimate, we've escalated those numbers, and I told you this a couple of meetings ago, we've escalated those to 2017 numbers, like putting escalation factors. So the numbers you see in the yellow there aren't the final numbers, they're the early numbers, we've escalated them up, so they're more expensive than that, which is what we need to do. We've also had a contingency on at the end, we've also had a soft cost, which is our fees, legal fees, some F and E furniture, you know, budgets that we've added, we're trying to anticipate what those buckets of money need to be, so we're not leaving anything out. The yellow boxes are the ones right now that we, our packages, has gone through and suggest, based on our conversations throughout the last several months, of what we think the highest priorities, and based on the constructability and onsite, that criteria, what our suggestion would be. And if you go to the bottom line on our second page, down here with the big question mark, with our escalation, with our contingency, with our soft cost total on the yellow projects, you can already see down here in blue, I can't see it, it's a $11,400. With this scenario as an example, it means out of the 12, we're saying you've got $11,400 to spend on projects. I don't think that's our number. I think we're too high, okay? I'm just showing you the example and the process we're going to go through, and why that's important for us. Because if that's too high, one or two or three of the yellow boxes needs to go white, which means it's not accomplished at this time, decision time. That's why we want to go through this with you in workshop format or whatever is best for you, go through these individually, so that we can make choices and put that bundle together. Then we can really be effective for you. Then we can start working with these folks efficiently, we can set up schedules, we can come back to you and show you design alternatives multiple times. I think I did really go over that in the schedule, but I symbolically put across here that multiple times during these processes, we're coming back to you on updates, designs, whatever the board needs to see, meeting minutes from our meetings with the user groups, with our facilities group, with our next steering committee, keep everyone informed on how that process is moving forward, along with budget updates, till you see. And as I told you when I interviewed, when I come back to those numbers, I'm going to get a pat on the back. If it's too high, I'm going to tell you, we're too high. We found something at the junior high we hadn't seen. It's going to cost more money. We have to be stewards of this money. Because we can't go all the way down the path and start cutting on the ground and figuring we're over. That's not the time to do it. So.
So how many meetings or how much time do you think it'll take to get to that point?
To get to the decision of the projects of the matrix, I think if you would allow us a couple of hour work session with you, we could go through, with the information we already have on those projects, of logging, you know, and put together a good scenario. We've already, in the yellow box highlighted, we've done a lot of that ourselves. I'd be prepared to sit down with you tomorrow and go, that's why we selected those boxes. Are there going to be boxes on there that we wish we could do, without a doubt? And if you ask me, why aren't you building the elementary school classrooms? I'm going to go, I wish we could. Again, the need doesn't go away. They wouldn't take a top-tier list if they weren't needed, okay? But as we told everyone during the campaign, you know, to the citizens, we're going to capture those projects we don't do, we've already got a list of others, we'll put that in the next funding mechanism that comes up, we look at how we rotate those, reprioritize, and do the same thing again. It's an ongoing process. It's the only way we have, it's the only thing we have. And I'd like to, you know, we've talked with Ray and Dr. Corman again also, when we're going through this, some security measures that we want to take, they're $75,000. Maybe, now Ray, don't throw his head, is he here? Don't hit me with a back of the head. We bet sure in his capital budget that he has each year, what can we accomplish out of that? What? Maybe we refocus, because some of these may cause some of his projects online to get rejostled because we can take care of them when we're in the area. So if he takes any, we take any offload, I want his money back. So it's just being fair, my idea. But I think it gives us that opportunity to share, you know, that information and make sure we're being efficient. So maybe there's a few more things we can accomplish just with the yearly capital budgets, but do it at this moment. So I need a couple of hours of your time to package that because these windows aren't moving, okay? If we miss the bid windows, we miss the construction windows, I'm going to recommend you wait, because we'll pay more if we don't hit those properly. No pressure on you, I'm just saying, I will recommend, if we don't get there, that we wait. It doesn't make sense to spend more money because we're preferred. But I think we have ample time to even accomplish a couple of small projects here and there in the next break, and certainly be ready to even start major projects in some of the, you know, summer projects, you know, in the spring. So perfect time to bid it over the winter, it puts us bidding projects in, right after the first of the year, contractors are lining up for their summer work. So it, we actually, with this schedule, it works perfectly with that April vote that you got. I wish we could have snuck some projects in this summer, but the board probably realizes in order to do that, we would have had to have gambled on the fours, gotten us paid to do plans on money we didn't have, and I don't think that was an option. So I think we're in really prime position, so if you can find a time in the next couple of weeks, I'd like to be sitting with you and highlighting the boxes that you recommend, and then I can get back to you with more detailed planning and schedules. Can we move this forward?
Well, we've already been discussing a budget workshop, and so we can do part of it for the budget and then spend the other half of it on review. Looking at June 8 or June 15, could board members distribute your calendars and see what is best for you, please? And the lengths of decisions are, either one of those days, Greg will.
I have to ask my wife.
Oh, wow.
I can't. We will make that work.
Okay.
You know how hard it is to get versus people together, so we will make that work.
Okay. So they're both Thursdays, June 8 and June 15, are two options. A preference from any of you?
Is that who wants to get our preliminary budgets?
Yes.
Nice, ladies.
Preliminary budgets, I believe, we're handing out this evening, correct?
Oh, good. Okay. Great. Oh, but that way you'll have some.
You'll have time to review them.
And we'll have questions.
Get questions to us, you know, that Monday before, so we can get everything lined up as smoothly as we can.
Either one, either one.
The 8 works really nicely. If you were asking again, I don't know if I missed my opportunity.
Well, you have to travel too, so the 8 is fine with me. Anybody have a problem, conflict with the 8? All right. A timeframe, like at 6, is that early enough? Is that a problem? Okay, we know for those who are working 6. All right, so we'll look for June 8 at 6:00 p.m. here.
Great. We will be here in hour and a half, so that'd be, we'll take as long as, you know, we need to, but I know you've got other business to do.
Well, we'll start with you first and then we'll go to the.
We'll be as efficient as we can, we'll be sure we're ready for it. Really, the document you have in front of you, you guys can review that matrix with the highlighted elements, again, we're going to start with that ourselves. I've, just as reference, I'm probably going to go back and tailor that list down to 10. Not that it's an even number, but maybe, Dr. Corman, you and I can kind of work, maybe a little preliminary towards that, so that I've got a couple of different packages to look at that hit different numbers. So you get an idea of what a $9 million package looks like, what a $10 million package, and that'll help us start the discussion. I think it's better to have attention fatigue than start from scratch, you know, with that. We'll come prepared to have that discussion. Okay? Any other questions you'd like me to answer? Great, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mrs. Ginge, I didn't ask you about Julie. We'll be.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll see you on the 8. Thank you.
Okay. So that moves us down then to the technology report.
Hi. We've had 126 completed work orders during this period. We did training class on Zoom, and it was really interesting, it allows us to remote into computers, and it was kind of neat that Karen got to actually use it today with one of the secretaries, so it was kind of neat she was able to help them work through an issue right there, so it was really awesome. Technology crews made our final changes and submitted a technology plan or review. We got through that testing, we had just a few minor issues, but overall it went pretty smooth. Biggest issue, I would have to say myself, was moving, having to move a bunch of Chrome books to the elementary, we had to actually ship them all from the junior high and the high school, which then put them without the Chromebook, so, other than that, it went pretty well. We're in the process right now of doing a district-wide technology inventory, so the guys have been very busy going from building to building, trying to stay ahead of the custodians to check out everything on the computers, to get everything reported. We had two new servers installed, and we're in the process of implementing our active directory, which is replacing Nobel. We're actually in the beginning stages of it, testing has gone pretty smooth. And iPads, I talked in the past about how we are starting to manage the iPads, well, we're actually in the process of grabbing all the iPads from the teachers, putting all the information in the system, and then getting them back to the teachers. And it's actually been kind of nice because now if an iPad goes missing, we can find the exact location of where that iPad is, which will be good. And another thing we're working on is we have an opportunity for copier management, and we've got some system installed that will help us with our inventory of the copiers, as well as it lets us know when the toner's low, and they can actually order the, if the company is alerted when the toner is low. Any questions?
I guess not. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mrs. Ginge, we'll have our financial report.
I'm going to hand out your budgets. All we have enough for you. Do you want it? Okay. Thank you. Yeah, we do. So hopefully you'll have a couple of weeks now to kind of go through the budget, digest it, look through, come up with some questions or things that you might want to ask. I think it's a long document. As far as the financial report for this month, I have up there the financial statements. My budget is tracking pretty much the same as it has been every month that I've been sitting here in front of you and talking to you about it. So I'm pleased with how we're doing, we're a little bit running ahead, a little bit on revenue, which is good, expenditures are a little ahead, good, because we're changing the pay period. State revenue is continuing to come in strong, which is awesome, sort of positive. I have a budget amendment later in the meeting that I'm going to go through with you, and you'll see an increase in state revenue in classroom class time and proxy. So they raised the state adequacy target, which is what our, like, money is calculated off of. They raised that to $6,160, and that's what my budget amendment is based on. In May, our payment was $6,180. So that's good, I expect that'll probably still come in a little bit higher, but I didn't want to get too excited about that in my budget amendment. Next year, they're anticipating it to go even higher, but I'm conservative, so I didn't put that super high number in my budget for next year. Expenditures, they're coming in just the way we thought, finalizing all of our bills. The only, like, new expenditures that we have been having is for summer school, so, anyway. We've been really busy in my department, getting the budget ready for you. The bonds have kept me fairly busy, we did close on our bonds this morning, we have our funds, I'm ready to figure out what projects we're doing so I can start investing and figuring out when we need that money. Also. Um, also, we've had a conversion with our bank. I don't know if any of you bank at Eagle, but Eagle Bank has done a conversion and now we're Enterprise Bank. So we've been working through all the paperwork and things we need to do in regards to that for two-year-olds for accounts payable. And for our staff, we have HSA accounts over there, so...
Why don't you talk about that just for a moment?
Okay.
They just said conversions in our...
That's the biggest change that we are dealing with right now. We still are not, all of our employees who have an account are fine. They have cards, that's fine. We're not able to open any new accounts right now until they get us fully up and running, which on Monday, they told me would four to five days. I still haven't heard from them. So once our account is completely set up for the HSA, then we have to fill out a bunch of information on all our employees who have those accounts and upload it into their system. So it should, they're telling me it should work just fine. Um, we're hoping that once we do payroll next week, we'll be able to do what we need to do. So I'm hopeful. I've been working with the bank. I've talked with them a couple times a week, so...
I think the correct word's negotiated. You know, there was going to be, be assigned to the employee. She's leaving this part out. Kelly worked hard to negotiate with the bank to get sure, be sure that they waived the fee for the HSA for our staffs. Staff members that have HSAs, they were going to put surcharge on there per month. And Kelly worked hard, negotiated pretty hard to get that waived.
Per month and each time they opened a new account, there was a charge as well. So they are going to, not precharging us any fees for those things.
Good. Awesome.
I mean, our agreement with Eagle was that we had a fee, so they upheld that agreement. We're very pleased with that.
Hidden blood for teacher.
Yeah, well, it's in writing and they're whole length of it. But, um, also with the HSAs, there's a little bit of a transition time for anybody who currently has an HSA account with them. Because it was Eagle, um, Eagle transferred to Enterprise. So right now, everybody has an Enterprise debit card, but those are only active until they move it over to Optum, I think it's Optum Bank, which is who Enterprise uses to manage their HSA funds. But except for legal reasons, they have to have these time periods. So, yeah. So it's a little bit of an inconvenience for our staff, but they assure me that everybody loves it, these accounts are great, so I'm going to believe them. Trust me. Things are going well.
Any other questions? So staff gets to know and find those changes.
Yes. Um, Enterprise sent out a letter to each staff member and they have three options. Um, they have to check an option and send letters back. So hopefully, everybody is getting that done. I sent out an email. They know that needs to be happening. Because it's either continue your HSA with Optum, um, cash out your HSA like they'll send you a check, or I want a check, I'm going to, need to a different institution. That's the same thing. There were three options, but, um, they can choose what they want to do with their money. We're hoping they just stay with Optum, especially if they're still an active HSA user. Some people may have them and not have that insurance plan that corresponds to them.
Thank you.
Yes, we've notified staff. And the few people who are eligible for benefits who have chosen the HSA option, I'm staying in touch with them so as soon as they're able to sign up.
That does take care of themselves. All right. Any other questions? I thought I had?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, I was going to add that on my list, too. Um, so just a reminder, last year, we went through the budget. You had, you have it early. You should have plenty of time to go through and look at the preliminary, uh, budget. Please, if, as you go through, if you find, you have questions or things that you don't understand or you need explained, if you could submit those, um, would it be best to just send them to Beth Ann or to you?
Or to me.
And then they can compile those questions so that we can, uh, use those questions as talking points and answer them during the budget workshop on June, what do they say, 8th? Okay.
So you would know those before the 8th? How, how many days before the 8th?
I would say, what do you think, Kelly? As soon as possible, but, but two to three, um, which gives us time to add them in and...
By the 5th?
By the 5th would be perfect.
Six weeks later.
And, and that way, uh, what we do, like we did last year, we took all the questions, put them on a list, because, you know, the budget is a, a public forum for open discussion. So we will not answer them back to you, uh, for sunshine on all purposes, but we will draft that entire questionnaire. We will hand that out at the board meeting and to the public and go through line by line with you. So by the 5th will be great. Kelly, is that...
Yes.
Not that we won't take them later, but we just...
Well, okay. One question may lead to something else or cause you to have another question, but, okay. All right. So that gets us to our student advisors. Do you guys have a report or information you'd like to share with us?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yeah. So this month, we wrapped up the student activity survey that Mrs. Oshie requested. So we have some of those results to share with you guys tonight.
So big things, um, a lot of our students are actually involved in activities. So in school-led activities, 71% of the students that we surveyed said that they were involved in a school-led activity, so sponsored by Hillsborough. And then 55% of those students, those same students were also involved in activities outside of school. So that is a church group or a dance team or something else like that. So students are actually pretty involved, but kind of the other 28% are involved in anything. That's what we're looking for. So we also asked them other activities that they would be interested in and...
Yeah. So 11% of those students that we surveyed, uh, these were guys, of course, because they're requesting a men's volleyball team, which has been, oh, Mr. Marino knows. Our class is the one that, I think we were one of the first ones to bring it up. We came up like, hey, we get men's volleyball. And, yeah, so there's still a lot of interest in that. And now, since a lot of the other schools in our area, I've seen Festus and DeSoto, I think have women's tennis teams. Crystal City does, yeah. A lot of, so there's interest spiking in that now, too, for a women's tennis team. Um, students are wanting some more clubs, too. So not necessarily activities, but environmental awareness club is one of them. Um, there was a lot of our art student requesting advanced music club. So for students that want a higher workload or more stuff to do after school that's available to them. And then dance club, so like they have Rocket for this, for the people that don't want to do the auditions and they just want to have fun dancing, there's...
Casual dance club?
Yeah. And then back to the, back to the two sports, um, some pros to this that I had were it could provide more scholarship opportunities for students and it could also be a way to get that 20% more involved inside of our activities and get them interested in doing something at the school.
And, um, one of the really good things that we found for reasons why kids are not participating in activities, um, no student chose cost as the reason as to why they don't participate. So that is very good that these students know that that is available and money is not an issue. So that's really good. And 41% of the students who did not participate just said that they weren't interested. And then 31 of those also just said that they weren't, like, they didn't have enough time in their schedule or work conflict and, yeah. So it's...
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
Do you have any proposals on Adam or Forber?
I know that we have one student, um, the environmental awareness club. She's a friend of mine. She's already started getting, um, signatures as like a petition to start that club. And she already has a teacher who said that they'd be willing to sponsor that. So I'm going to get more information from her and speak with Ms. Freeman about that and kind of work, try and figure that out, but...
Did any of the students say transportation was an issue?
I think there was one or two, but that was like...
Very insignificant.
Right.
Interesting. Thank you, guys.
I think you need more information about that, just email us or... And that's basically our...
Well, Ben and I had chit-chatting after the bond election.
Yeah.
You had a fantastic idea on an opportunity. Do you want to share that idea?
Yeah, I was, I was just talking to Ms. Ederson about it last week for win team. Um, we're talking about getting a club slash activities. So I know they do it for Camp Hawk for the freshmen when they first come in. They have a, they have everybody set up tables around the gym and they offer, they have everyone, like they can go around and look at all the activities we offer in the high school. I said, well, I had a couple of responses from seniors and juniors that just moved into our district and they didn't know what opportunities we had available. So I thought maybe we could do it the first day of school or in that first week of school that we had and off, have the same kind of opportunity. So I think we're working on that right now to get that going so we can have everybody involved and try to find their plug-in.
And as a person who transferred during sophomore year, so I didn't go to Camp Hawk or Park or anything, um, talking to the guidance counselors also helps a lot. So we can ask them and get information from them because they have a big list of little things. And that's how I figured out about all the clubs at Hillsborough.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Um, there is no unfinished business at this time, so we'll move into the new business section. First item of new business is, um, to approve the math curriculum. This is the second read, so we need, um, approval of that this evening. Um, you had, you had it last month. So I need a motion to approve the K through 12 math curriculum as presented, and this will be for next school year. So thank you, Mrs. Petrie, and then Rob, please. Any discussion or questions, concerns with the curriculum? Okay, all in favor of approving the curriculum, raise your hand, please. All right, very good. Next item comes to us from, I believe, um, our director, Kim Jackson, right? And Dr. Corman?
Yes.
On approving the milk bid from Prairie Farms. So, um, the bid was, I forgot what it was.
The same as last year.
Okay.
And also, I wanted to point out that next year, they changed the guidelines, so we will, we'll be able to get 1% flavored milk instead of, instead of standard flavored. But I had a talk with Prairie Farms and they'll give it to us.
At the same price. Okay, very good. And that's good that it's staying the same.
Yes.
Price-wise, very good. Okay, so I need a motion to approve the bid from Prairie Farms for the 2017-18 school year for the district's Gary. Thank you, Mrs. Zaharsky. And somebody, is that you, Beth? And Beth? Any questions or concerns? Okay, all...
Can the kids, is chocolate milk part of this or can they...
Yes, flavored milk.
Oh, flavored.
Pink milk, mostly, obviously. Yes.
I just saw it.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand, please. All right, very good.
Item C, um, needs to be tabled until, uh, the June meeting. Uh, Mr. Reidenhour is requesting to have more time to review and make sure there's enough participants for the Washington DC trip.
I don't know. Okay, so we'll move on then. Going to the technology plan. And this is the first read, so there's no action taken tonight, just for you to be aware and read through. And next month, at the next meeting, um, we'll talk about approving that plan. Is there any information or anything we need to know about it?
The only thing I would mention to you that if you happen to look at the old tech plan, it's about 60 something pages, and this one's down to about 10 pages. Um, in the past, it was a requirement from DUCY. It's no longer a requirement from them, so I probably tried to do the model, have the perfect one. We tried to make it a little bit easier for anyone who looked at it to read it and for us to know whether we're achieving our action steps.
Okay. That's nice, to just kind of condense it a little bit, though.
Yeah, yeah, we did. We just combined things together.
Sure. Okay, so next month, we'll take action on that. Um, we also were given the student handbooks as a first read, um, so no action this evening. And if you have questions or concern about the handbooks, those should be addressed in the, the next few weeks, right? Try to make phone calls and help take care of that before we come. Um, so that gets us down to the budget amendment.
I'm just going to sit here and hop out of the...
Okay, that's fine.
Um, I spoke to you a little bit earlier about, um, the state revenue. I have updated that on my budget amendment. On one of those colored sheets there, and on the revenue. Scroll down. Keep going. There you go. Oh, you can't read the pink, there you go. Um, so I've updated the revenue streams that I know about right now. Um, we received final distribution on financial institution taxes, data assessed utilities. Um, investment revenue, I adjusted that to more accurately reflect where I think we're going to end the year because the investments have been a little better. We've been earning a little more interest. Bond proceeds, I added that into the revenue side. That's that big jump you see at the bottom, 12 million, because we actually do receive that in as revenue. Um, textbook adoption funds are not going to be spent this year. We're moving that to next fiscal year so that they have more time to make their selections. So I adjusted the budget for that. Uh, utilities were lower than anticipated this year. We had a very mild winter. Um, that, that's great for our budget, it really helps. Um, and then property and liability insurance, I adjusted that because those were lower as well. So overall, I have us ending the year a little better than my, um, initial budget earlier in the year, so I think we've...
That's awesome.
Yeah. We make them in a little better than where we were last year. So I'm very excited about that. Very good, so...
Any questions about the budget amendments? Okay, so I need a motion then to approve, um, the 2017 budget amendments as presented. Is that okay? Who said so? Eric and then second, Mrs. Zaharsky. So all in favor of approving these amendments, raise your hand. All right. Next item is the kindergarten enrollment date. We're already talking next year. So, um, the recommended enrollment date will be, um, for 2018, March 21th through the 23rd and April 9th through the 11th. And screenings will only occur on August 2nd. Is that, are all of those dates correct? Am I good with those?
Yes, to my knowledge.
Okay. All right, so I need a motion to approve those dates for enrollment and screening. Thank you, Mrs. Petrie, and Angie, second. Sorry, she raised her hand. That's what I was talking about. Okay. Issues with those dates. All in favor of approving those dates, raise your hand. All right. I like it when these... Okay, H has to do with the approval of MOUs. We had certified staff and nurses, correct? It's MOUs for those two organizations, those two groups. Um, and all parties were in agreement and have signed the MOUs. So we just need a motion from the board to approve those. Thank you, Rob and Mrs. Petrie. Any discussion?
We did. Dr. Isaacson sent out an email to the staff letting them know, as directed by the board, that about the survey coming up in the fall to ascertain their, their level of interest. And, uh, we'll communicate that out and then call you for more interest, or, excuse me, more information with, with regard to development of the survey and have more input on that.
Oh, correct. Thank you for, I forgot to... All right, so I need to show hands to accept both MOUs. All right, great. Um, item I talks about the zero hour weightlifting class. Um, is there, do we want to talk about that first?
You're, you're probably going to have to decide what you want to do with the motion. So all about Dr. Isaacson up, I know he and myself and, uh, Mr. Marino, Dr. Freeman, and Mrs. Hildebrand all kind of tried to put our hits together to develop something that, Hildebrand all kind of tried to put our hits together to develop something that meets the needs of our kids, as well as offering opportunities for them. I know Dr. Isaacson sent out a survey to all individuals that currently monitor weightlifting to get their input and opinions, and I think he's incorporated that into the survey, so.
Well, the recommendation was to add two morning weight room supervisor positions, correct? And put them on the extra duty salary schedule?
Yes, ma'am, at level five.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
That is correct. Currently, our zero hour is a class, and we felt the best to remove it from the class. And so, but yet we still want to maintain the zero hour because of the benefit that it has for our students. And so, we're going to move the two individuals that currently serve at that position, that is a part of their work day. And so, their work day was to be moved to start at seven thirty, like a normal first hour and go through there. And so, how do we maintain it? And that is, we need to compensate it like an extra duty. That provides flexibility so that they're able to do some of the things that they've done at zero hour. When you're under a class, it becomes a, should be a lot more stringent.
Can we define class as offering a credit? So it's a credit, it's been a credit bearing class. And the recommendation is to remove the credit, but still have the class. And in the past, it was a class, as Dr. Isaacson said, the individual that was participating or directing had an extra prep throughout the school day, so they had two preparatory hours to offset teaching the first hour of the day, zero hour. Sorry, John, go ahead.
And so, looking at how to come up with a salary. As I emailed, we actually have an afternoon weightlifting session. We have three positions, three individuals that do that. And they do it by season, there's a fall season, a winter season, and a spring season. And that is compensated as a level label, which is six hundred and eighty to eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And so, and there's three of those. So you're looking at the numbers basically of right around twenty-one hundred to twenty-four hundred, eighteen hundred to twenty-four hundred.
And those are for afternoon weightlifting?
That's afternoon weightlifting. And so I wanted, I asked, I was kind of like, all right, how often is it open? What are we doing? And it's open three days a week for forty-five to fifty minutes in most cases. In the winter, it's open a little bit longer. The average attendance is five to fifteen kids in after school for a while. And so, looking at that, all right, so let's look in the morning. How does that translate? Is they have anywhere from forty to sixty students. So, right there, we're gonna need two positions strictly for, say, you have forty to sixty kids left, and one set eyes, it's an issue.
Do you think that number will change since it's not a credited anymore? Will it decrease?
I don't know, I don't think so. Personally, I don't think so. I think, not in the short term, for sure. To, if, three years from now, it could. And I actually put in here, if the number drops, the position's gonna drop. This can't be a thing of, now you got twenty kids, we have two people making, the numbers are going to dictate the need.
It's mainly the football team, isn't it?
Right.
So they're gonna, pretty much always going to.
Sure. But now, since it's no longer a credit class, can't it be open to all students?
Absolutely, and will, it should be.
Okay.
And absolutely. And the class was open to all students. It's just, the reality is, I have a son who's a football player, and he don't like getting up at six anymore, and he stands to gain something from it. Is, the reality is, we won't have, but it's always open. We encourage that it should be.
Are we looking at the new zero hour as being like three days a week?
No, I would, I figured it as overall, kind of four days. Is, and that flexibility to, there's gonna be, that, I asked, I was like, all right, how often are we gonna meet? And there's gonna be periods of time where they may take a week off, and they may be five days a week. But on average, four days a week is what I would anticipate. And so, that's, in looking at that number, is, that's twenty percent more than the three days a week on a five day week, and just, and that's how I use it that way. And so figuring four days a week, if they go five, but that's, would be my expectation. That is what should average to justify the salary.
So students could choose to, well, today, I'm gonna go in in the morning because I got a, you know, whatever, but hey, I didn't make it, I got there late, I could go in the afternoon now, so I could pick and choose my timeframe. So will they be keeping track, maybe, of how many kids they have that show up in those morning and afternoon sessions?
We're gonna keep track. I mean, I'm gonna ask them, like, hey, is, in group things, like within a position, is, it has to justify, and so there is a little, on the recruitment thing, of, hey, guys, I need you to show up, or it kind of, it's been a strong program, and it, we hope that it will.
Will continue.
And it's been important for the kids, it really has. It gives them some of that flexibility to do the things that make zero hours zero.
So the morning, we're gonna have two guys, our two instructors, coaches. In the afternoon, how many do we have?
Oh, we have one or three.
And they're already.
They're already.
Already established and on the salary schedule.
Are we looking at the two individuals to supervise the morning session, the two individuals that now do zero hour? Are we looking at the same two individuals, or?
Well, I think we'll open it up as a, but when it comes to qualifications, or imagine, if they would apply, they're probably strong candidates.
But you're gonna, okay.
Sure, absolutely.
And here, it's, you know, you're gonna increase or decrease, the district will reevaluate. When do you plan on reevaluating? Like at the end of the semester, at the end of the next school year, how, every quarter?
We pay an extra duty contract, and we pay all year long.
Okay, so it's like at the end of the year?
It is, hey, as we're going through here, and we're dropping down, yeah, we're not going to sustain that for long.
In reality, you're expecting forty, but you may get ten. I mean, hopefully not, but.
I would.
That could be a possibility. I mean.
Sure.
I mean, anything could.
Anything.
I mean, if they don't want to get up in the morning.
But actually, it could be.
Right now, yes.
It could be sixty.
It could be, in the fall, it is gonna be sixty. And traditionally, as some of the seniors stop coming, you know, it'll drop into the forties. But it's going to, I anticipate, sustain.
When it was, may I, if it was credit bearing, the seniors didn't take it second semester. It's not like they just stopped coming, they just didn't take it second semester. So it would drop from a sixty range into a forty range, depending on how many seniors. I would anticipate that trend to continue.
But since it's gonna be open to all students, it's possible that you could have other athletes from other sports.
Yes, or someone going in the military or something like that. That just must have worked out.
We won't turn anyone away.
I'll, I'll go.
So there's a morning session, an afternoon session, but I know there's other students that don't have stuff to do during the RTI period. Have you considered opening it up during that RTI period as well?
No, I haven't. Because that would be working on physical fitness, and we could possibly think about that, but we're trying really hard. I mean, that could be a green space if we had an adult in there who was qualified to supervise that. But it would only be a green space because we're trying really hard to keep our focus on academic, except for those who are starting to get. Okay. Any other thoughts or concerns about this topic? So I do need a motion to approve the addition of two morning weight room supervisor positions that would be on the extra duty schedule at a level five.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz, and then second, Mrs. Petry. Any other thoughts? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. All right. Motion carries. Next item has to do with the approval of purchasing two buses, is that correct?
That's correct.
There are two 2013 passenger buses for the cost of eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars, which includes trade-in of old buses.
Correct, one.
One old bus. Do you have anything, sure, if you'd like to?
Hi. So I got two bids, two buses. The reason why I chose the one from Midwest is, there's a couple reasons. First, there's seventy-seven passenger buses instead of seventy-one. The other reason is they might be a little older than 2013 versus the one 2015 that I found, that has less mileage, about ten thousand miles per bus. The other reason is, these buses have integrated front seats, which means that students that have an IP that want to go on a field trip generally, you know, because of their IP, I'm gonna have to have a mini behind the bus. And these seats are integrated, so they could travel with their classmates. So that was another reason why I chose it. They gave me a really good trade-in allowance on that sixty, that I was not anticipating, that was really good. So that's the reason why I chose the bid from Midwest over the one from Central States. Plus, the 2013 that they were showing us is all the way near Chicago. And from the pictures, there was corrosion underneath the bus. I showed Dr. Corn, and he agreed. It was just not really worth driving up there to even look at it. So that's the reason why I chose the Midwest one, if that's a thing he knows.
Okay, that's good to know. All right, so we have two buses to accept this recommendation for. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Petry and Mr. Stevenson. Okay, so we are accepting the recommendation from Midwest Bus Sales for two buses at eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars, which includes the trade-in. Any other thoughts before we vote? Okay, all in favor? Very good, thank you.
Did you have a second round for this?
Couple other things before we get to the, to the buses. All right, so then the next item has to do with the board committee assignments. I hope you had a chance to look through that list and see where you've been plugged in. Any questions or issues that you have?
And your teacher of the year, John Wilson, is there?
Yes, I saw that too.
Did we have anybody on it? I don't have a side to.
Okay, I thought we added you in there.
Do we know, do we do two?
Angie O, she's on.
Teacher of the year.
And I was supposed to be taking on to audit.
The audit committee, what you said? So remove that teacher from the audit committee.
I just thought that I would come up with the facilities committee.
That you would come off of?
No, comment about the facilities committee with all the new plans and stuff with the bonds and all the new stuff going on. It probably wouldn't be a bad idea for them to raise to join or connect.
I don't have enough on here when I'm looking at the numbers, so you can put me on there.
Well, we need to, due to the policy that we're coming up, that we put on the agenda late, is ADF, we're gonna have to have one of you sit on the wellness committee. So someone with a health.
Jane's already on that committee.
Okay, so I just want to verify that. Is one gonna be enough, Kim, or do we have to have more than one?
I'm on the wellness.
Okay, so we have.
So we have two people on that already. Angie's on the wellness, Angie. So you would be willing to be on facilities, it's up to you, sir? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Probably nice.
I could hold that out of her. So Mrs. Petry will then sit on. The facilities.
I change drywall, that's all.
Okay. Any other changes? Last time, you know, last call on that, otherwise we'll hold you to it. Okay, so I need a motion to accept the list of committees. Okay. Mrs. Petry, Mr. Stevenson. Okay, last time to back out a little piece, I guess. All in favor to approve this list of committees' assignments? Okay, very good. All right. We're getting closer. Letter L has to do with a policy, policy ADF, some revisions that have been made for our district wellness program.
And I must say that we're not happy with them. None of the administrators, Kim, myself, no one is happy with this. So I would encourage the board to rather than consider approving this tonight, it has to be implemented by June 30th. So we would like to use this as a first read, give us more opportunity to work with MSBA to refine, and I'll point out exactly what issues. If you look at the front page, paragraph two, the food standards used for this policy, you can see the committee on page two that helped develop this. They're wanting to use the food standards previously adopted under the snacks standards. And if you read that paragraph, it says, previously, that's midway through the second paragraph, the school district only had to adhere to food standards for foods sold, you said italicized, to students on district property during the school day. Foods, underlined, provided, but not sold to students include foods used in celebrations or classroom parties and food used as rewards. Now, I want you to think about that for a moment. My first issue was, how do we, how do you do that? And then, after further detail, we see, at least you don't have to track lunches, what individual student brings from home. However, we have so many parties, celebrations, hard work awards, that include foods that are provided outside the regular lunch periods. We have so many students that walk to Casey's for celebratory pizza, for getting A's on assessments, cupcakes for parties. So what we're trying to do is develop what the standard's gonna be. So Kim has been working with other surrounding districts. I told her, you know, just go to Schnucks, buy a dozen cupcakes, we'll eat them, her and I, and determine what the fat and sugar content is, and try to set our standards based on that.
Yeah.
So we need some time, we need some time to try to figure this out, but we have to get it in front of you because as you read it, it must be in effect June 30th.
Isn't this, isn't this the policy that we sat in on in the meeting and, like the Ozar talked about this policy, that it's government stuff?
It is government stuff, it is the USDA, it, that's why you have to adopt it, but we're not happy with. And I appreciate Beth Anne reached out to the MSBA writer and said, hey, you know, we have some concerns, and we're hearing a lot of schools do. Because there's a lot of, and we're not talking eating cupcakes every day, but we are talking about wanting to celebrate kids and reward kids. And this would cut out our coupons from Casey's. So anyway, we're wanting to read this, so if you would just consider this a first read, and then we'll come back with some revisions, and it can be second read, look at the revisions, and then put it in effect. I don't think you have an option, because it talks about, yes, it talks about wellness, and it's our understanding, right, Kim? Kim's been to several meetings, it says this policy has to be adopted by June 30th.
But we can make revisions.
We can make some, and that's our issue. What we want to try to do is get our revisions, get them on paper, get them to MSBA legal for response prior to you voting on it. That's what we're really striving to do. So, we just need to consider it a first read.
Okay, so we'll just table this and continue next one. It's our first read, and we'll talk more about it later in the next one. Okay. Item M has to do with leasing of a, another bus?
Yes.
Is it just one?
Actually, two.
Two. Okay, so we need a motion to approve the lease of an early childhood sped bus route?
Bus lease.
Let's just lease, well, this says. Sped route.
Second.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the bus lease first. Okay, and Eric has approved it, and Beth seconded it. Okay. Okay. Give us some information about what.
Basically, these buses are leased buses that you lease annually from the busing company. We sent this information home to you in the 48-hour update. What this allows us to do as a district is to have 2017. And if you remember, we had a parent come to the board talking about some of the conditions of the buses, I see it now in your head, that, you know, we want better air conditioning, we want a better bus. Our buses currently have booster seats in them for students that happen to be restrained in seat belts. These buses have integrated in all the seats, seat belts for our special needs kiddos of early childhood. Leasing these two buses, and if you read on here, early childhood special education expenditures are 100% reimbursable the following year. So what happens is the district would pay the $21,000 for the 17, 18th school year, and then the money gets reimbursed to you, what you spent on early childhood special ed. Now, the thing that is written, needs to be clearly understood, and that's why you have the word route in here, these have to be designated and only used for early childhood special ed kids. They can't be used for anything else within the district. Otherwise, you're not reimbursed with the amount that you, that you lease the buses for. These are annual leases. You can upgrade, or excuse me, you can renew the lease annually, and as written here, due to the age of our buses currently for the ECSE program, this would be a great addition for you. So you're uprunning the cost, you get the money back on, as you see here, if you use the function code 2559, early childhood special ed transportation services, you get the money reimbursed. Matt, I had him, Mr. Whitehead, call and check with Desi back years ago when I was doing this, you had to get pre-approval for any capital purchase or expenditure of this nature. But now they see it's pretty well commonplace. What, we have a mileage allowance, 15,000 miles per year, that would have to be also considered in this. And I believe Regina and Transportation Department's worked that mileage out and believe it will be well under that. We've included pictures for you to kind of take a look at. If you turn your attention to, I think, page two, a state called mine, you'll see the integrated seat belts. It's similar to the minivan I used to have. The seat belts are in the seat with a little flapper over them, and you just lay them down and you have access to the seat belt. So the kids that don't need them, of course, well, not be utilized them, but it's my understanding, ECSE, everyone has to be in a seat belt. And I like Regina's point of the booster seats, this option, you never have to buy booster seats because these do not go out of date. So helps with future purchase. We just did that last year, the year before, sorry Regina, but, you know. Anyway, our recommendations that you accept this, we've included an email for you there on another couple of pages over, talking a little bit about from Ken Pierce and Midwest Transit, and some quotes. And as far as we know, there are several districts that do this, but there's not a lot of busing companies that do. Did I leave anything out, Regina, that you'd like to say?
I would. There is.
Are we gonna, I'm assuming that we're going to be okay with the mileage allowance?
Yes.
One bus that we have currently ran 10,000, the other one ran 11,000, so we are 1100. And we still do have Bus 61, which also runs early childhood. So if we even get anywhere near it, we can just switch those two buses out and it'll go down. So we should be great.
Well, we have a student movement that's kind of out, you know, out Springs, Cedar Hill area, we have to drive way far out, we can accommodate the other permanent ones.
Correct. Okay. So.
Did we do a motion already?
All right. So we have a motion to approve the bus, or the lease for two buses for $22,235. Is that right?
I believe that is correct.
I did.
I didn't add that, of course, I trust you.
Yeah, but I was a comrade. Okay. All in favor of approving that lease? All right. Very good.
The tentative delivery date on that is August, second week of August, is that right?
It was either.
I can't remember.
It may have been the end of August.
End of August.
Depending on when we get the order in. But we still have.
That could be tomorrow.
Two buses right now.
Okay. All right. And our last item this evening has to do with the certified salary schedule. Do we want to talk about that first?
I think you're going to have to, to be honest, because we don't know which direction you're going to want to go.
Right.
So part of negotiations that was brought up from MSTA was to, for the district to look at those individuals that were frozen on the salary schedule. And the board that was representing, I guess, the committee of board members that was representing the board, said that yes, we will take a look at that and bring information back to the board to have those discussions. Dr. Isaacson brought up that we have looked at this in the past, and there were some issues with what it does is overinflate administrator salaries, and we don't want that to happen. We want to take care of our teaching staff, encourage staff to work toward masters and beyond hours, but yet not overinflate admin salaries. Administrator salaries are based upon the bottom end of the masters plus 30 column on the salary schedule, and then there's a multiplier on top of that. So before you, John, discuss some information that we're going to pass out. We're going to start discussions on some options we've come up with. One of the topics of discussion was to add in our salary schedule, there are blanks. Do we have one we can put up on the current salary schedule? We might be able to pull our line or put up on the screen. It's on the website under HR, if you want to go to the new website. Thank you. So what we started talking about doing was, we have several columns that are frozen throughout the salary schedule, and they start on the bachelor's. If you just become a teacher and you don't go back to school, get any additional hours at year 16, you're basically frozen. The whole point in having a stair-step salary schedule is to encourage individuals to go back and get beyond a bachelor's degree. Our current salary schedule, as we work to pull it up here, salary and benefit schedule, our schedule is tiered, and it has rows and columns, bachelor's plus eight, 16, bachelor's plus 24, then a master's, followed by a master's 15, 30, and then a doctor's schedule that was added last year. We freeze those schedules at year 16. I don't know if I can encourage John to kind of point that out for us. What we do is freeze currently at a bachelor's 16, we freeze at a bachelor's and eight at year 17, and then year respectively, 18, 19, is bachelor's plus 24. And then we end the schedule with a master's, and it ends at 24 years of service to the district for an education. And master's plus 15 goes to 26, I believe, and then we still have two years, year 28 is kept at master's plus 30 and doctor's. So the two things that we're putting before you this evening, actually, we have, I think, three or four options for you to take a look at, four options, is number one is to take the salary schedule and open it up and add $200 to each one of the steps. So we're working to get the, am I just have to? Add $200 to all of, every, throughout the entire salary schedule, everything that is currently frozen, add two, there we go, right there. All right. So the first proposal is to add $200, as you can see the stair step, teacher with 16 years and a bachelor's ends here. So no matter how many years of service they give the district, they're frozen, oh, my number jumped there, they're frozen in 16 years. The only way that they receive a pay increase on year 16 or 17 through 30 is we have to add money to the base. So can you scroll up to the top, I'm right there. So we have to add money here, which filters throughout the entire column. Now, as a teacher goes back, if they, if they get to year 15 or 16, they can go back and get eight college credit hours, and they can move over. But again, can you kind of scroll down for me here? As you see, with years of service, they start, they're frozen at certain years of service. So the first proposal is to add $200 to every vacant blank, if that makes sense. So this respectively, be how much, my mathematician, did y'all pay any attention, $200 to that?
47.
47, thank you. So we will add that 200 in each hole. Now, your next option was to look at the masters and the masters plus 15 and add 200 to those. Now, what you have to understand is even when you put money in, there's going to be teachers, for example, if teacher's on year 20, and she's been frozen, she's going to get two, four, six, eight, $1,000, if that makes sense. All right. The next option was to look at a masters and masters plus 15 only. So leave these columns, Eric, can you scroll up for me? I can't see my column. Thank you. Right, one more. Boom. All right. So leave the bachelor's, all the bachelor's alone, and just look at the masters, which is column five, the masters plus 15, and add 200 to those. The thing that you have to understand, Eric, can you scroll to the bottom again for me? When you start adding money and affects these lines, you really have to look at the far blue corners. And the reason being, you don't want someone to get here and all of a sudden be making more money than individual over here in the far columns. You have to be careful how much money's added, where it's added, and that's smaller on here.
Sorry. I meant to make it bigger for you.
Thank you, everybody. So what happens is we don't want to overinflate these salaries and de-plate these salaries. The reason these are blue, we'll answer that question for you now. All right. So John, how much do we have in between each block?
829.
Until you hit.
829.
The yellows?
The yellows.
Are bigger, John.
Bigger, John.
And then?
The blues.
Long.
And no, this was designed, I believe, by Randy Charles mid, early 2000s. It is, I'm making the assumption that when you got to year 29 and 30, they dialed it back because the administrative salary is tied to it. And you can see on the handout I gave you that to continue the $829 on down makes a significant impact administrative.
So as we go to the blue column, you have the blue column on page one, that is, what if we do a little more? So if more means $400, and again, and the reason we structured it this way is because we had varying opinions of the board. Some said we need to put something in every hole, so somebody gets something. Others said, well, we still need to encourage our staff to go back and advance their education. So we need to look at encouraging this area, the masters and beyond. So in that, we looked at, well, what would $400 do? Now, let's talk about the financial impact. To add $200 to every vacant hole, you're looking at 7,600 bucks, and that is respectively this coming school year. We tried to do analysis on the impact of what, how this is going to carry out, but it's hard to do that because you don't know who else is going to go back and get advanced degrees. We don't know who's going to move. If we just did the $200 in the masters, the masters plus 15, that's 1,600 bucks. The next option was to add $400 to the masters, the masters plus 15, so we, that's the masters, the masters 15, masters 30, and the doctor's columns, what would that cost? And that is 3,600 bucks. And lastly, what if we did 829, which is again the steps in between the salary schedule, and take that 829 and spread it through the masters, again, the masters all the way down to the doctor's columns, and make each block jump to 829 to match the salary schedule, you're looking at $8,290. Now, what we also want to talk about is the staff that are impacted. So we have the teachers under the description, we have, we left the name out, but we told you what their certifications are. If they have, teacher number one has a masters plus 15, that individual would move one step, they would get $200. And so you go all the way across, or they would get 200, or they would get 400, or they would get 820. So you can look that there's an individual with a masters would move five steps. And I think, John, that's probably the highest score we have, right? Every masters, they would jump five steps. They would get $1,000, $1,000, $2,000, or $4,145. Okay? Now, one thing to remember when you're thinking, man, that's ridiculous, that's a lot of money. Well, they've been frozen for several years. So they're going to get whatever you put in those blocks. All right. We've tried to show you some other things. Now, I'm going to turn this over to John because I appreciate him helping. Actually, John, we will put all this together, so I got to give him the credit on that. And we're going to talk, because I think one of the big impacts you need to understand is how does this, how's this going to affect administrators? Because remember, anything you do down here, it affects administrative salary schedule.
Can you not pull the administrative salary schedule out and have a separate one like you did with, remember the horrendous salary schedule that had all, everybody classified staff in all the different categories? Remember that one? And then you kind of pulled them out, and everybody has their own salary schedule?
Well, the administrator does have their own salary schedule, and that's, this is the administrative salary schedule. I brought this, this is out of our book, because this is important to look at. We can.
We know what.
The, obviously, with anything, there's pros and cons to however we do it. I don't know how, you know, to go back in history as to why they attach it to the teacher's salary schedule. Presumably, in those situations, my experiences, so that administrators aren't getting a raise and the teachers don't. So they tie it, and it's connected. And some districts end up being runway train where it pushed the administrative salaries very high. If you don't have it tied to the salary schedule, there's a greater likelihood of it's just, all right, what do I think John Isaacson was coming here for? And it really is almost true negotiating, is I'll offer you this amount. And so you have individuals all over the place without a defined amount. So in looking at how to address this, it really does get a little complicated because it is, our MOU is to get a set this year. And we would like to obviously recognize the individuals that have been here, you know, at least 17 years, all the way up to the 25, because they have been frozen. For those teachers who are down below 25, the average of your top three years is what the rest of your life retirement is based on. And so that becomes a factor as well. But how do you go about it where, as if you look on, flip the page over, and I'm on page two here, you'll see, this is where we added in 200 to every box. What I tried to show was that is adding $12,000 total to the salary schedule. However, the number of individuals impacted next year would be 18 teachers. Okay? And you can kind of see that correlates to the front on the 200. 18 people next year are going to be frozen somewhere along the schedule. A majority of them are in that bachelor's category. And so the additional cost would be 7,600 dollars if we went that route to teachers only. Administrators would not be impacted because basically it's already at $200. Okay? On the next, if you flip over, where you'll see some black there was, we maintain it where if you don't have your masters, you're froze at year 15. But once you jump to your masters, these boxes here, masters and beyond would get 200 additional in each box. So it goes to the 59,087. There's four individuals who would benefit from that, that change at a total cost of 6,000 dollars. Again, there is no administrative impact. The discussion was, hardly, yeah, $200, you know, how much, how much is that? I mean, is it enough for those teachers who go up with 829? Now, you have two hundred, because a normal step has been the eight twenty-nine. After that, I start putting in, this is our admin salary schedule. It's also important to note, if you guys can kind of look down through there, is one of the things too that does play a factor in this for us as a district, is we have an old admin staff, as far as a very veteran admin staff. Use my words. Yeah. But a very veteran admin staff, which is great. Experience is better than nothing. And if you look at our admin salary schedule, is that handed you? You'll see on our multiple in that box right below, kind of the explanation. In your first five years as an administrator, is we have like a formula. And there's a position factor, there's a degree factor, and then there's years of service factor. Okay? And so mine as assistant superintendent is a one point four position factor. And I have my doctorate, so you add in point zero eight. Somebody with a masters would not add in anything, okay? So you have a one point four eight, and then you add in the number of years that I think. Presumably, when they designed this plan, is if you'll see, the first five years, it's a two percent jump. It's a two percent jump. Then it goes in year five through ten, it's a one percent jump. This is my ninth year, I have a one percent jump for another year. From years after that, it goes to the five percent, sorry, excuse me. Half a percent. And then administrator who's been here over fifteen years goes to, I believe, a quarter percent. And so you'll see there the differing ranges where that is, on that first one, the amount of the raise for this year for those individuals all the way down. Okay? And so, and the key thing too with the teachers is an eight hundred twenty-nine dollar step, unless you hit one of the yellow markers. The one position that is not tied on the administrative salary schedule is that of the superintendent, that is set by the board. And so the only way that that goes up is if we add money to box one, the base. Okay? So, kind of, you see what I've done there, showing the impact and how it would impact the different individuals. I'm going to flip to the next one, adding four hundred dollars to the masters and beyond. And it does make a little bit of a difference for that individual, those individuals that are frozen in the masters. Right now, the top that they'll make is fifty-eight thousand at retirement, and moves it to sixty-one, two eighty-seven. That is somewhat significant, you can kind of see the bottom there. But then, that is also adding in the four hundred, because there'd be individuals impacted on the masters plus thirty and the doctorate. And kind of talking about that is, hey, if we add four hundred to those other categories, and let's leave the other ones at two hundred. But the issue becomes, you're gonna have people in their twenty-ninth year, masters plus thirty on there. I've been better, I would've got a bigger raise, even though they're making more money. It becomes psychological if I just done masters plus fifteen. Kind of go backwards and get bigger raise, even though it's a less amount. Is that consistent piece? Six individuals would be impacted by that. But this is where you start seeing this impacts the administrators. Is, six teachers would see a benefit of thirty-six hundred dollars in varying degrees, but the total cost for administration is eighty-seven hundred. So the total cost of additional is twelve thousand dollars. And then you'll see on the next page what, how that impacts each one of the individuals, so you can kind of compare what that looks like. You'll also notice that there's some individuals that are newer, some of that is savings and/or additional costs over the previous year. So, but some of our newer people can have those. On the next one, adding eight hundred twenty-nine bucks to the masters on over. Once again, it's just starting at the masters. If we just run it consistent, we're gonna run eight hundred twenty-nine all the way down. You can see six individuals would be impacted, that'd be eighty-two hundred dollars in teacher salary benefit, but the total cost for administrative raises is twenty-eight thousand dollars.
And that's just for this year?
That's just for this year. That becomes every year. Yeah, that's, that's one of those things, that's the... And kind of looking at the historical, as far as the teachers coming down through, is I would say that these numbers, it's gonna have it flow, but probably go up two or three, or three or four. But it's gonna stay fairly consistent. Just some people are retiring off. There's people rolling off versus rolling into that category. And so that is, as you kind of look through, and you'd see the, on the very last page, the economic impact there. So that's the tough thing, is how do we go about addressing it for our staff that are in those areas without sending the message like, wait a minute, I got a staff, and the admin got a raise? And that is, I mean...
And involved with your folks didn't get anything except the staff?
And that's, that's the hard issue. And so, to going back to what Director Petrie said, to take off the administrators off the salary schedule, I haven't thought about that enough to make it educated.
We don't have to make a decision.
No, that's correct.
We're just...
Now, but to that end, we are under somewhat of a time crunch, because contracts have to go out, and we have to set everything up.
This is for this year?
If we, this is...
For this year? Unless you want plenty of time to think about it, and it's not gonna go into effect until next year.
I would say that's gotta be the case. That's my opinion, that's just my opinion.
Yes, I have a question, a couple things come up. Is, are we looking to do this to just provide some additional money for our veteran teachers? Or are we trying to do this to get our teachers to move up into the more education? Is this, is two hundred dollars a year worth me going back this...
Eighty a year, a month. Sixteen dollars a month is what they'll say.
To go back, you're looking at...
You're looking at, you know, matches to straight masters, frozen at fifty-eight, eighty-seven versus sixty, eighty-seven. So realistically, what you're looking at is retirement, what's that gonna look like at retirement? And, and I mean, you know, I'm sure you could put some hard numbers of that. And is, you know, and I mean, that's a cost versus benefit. I mean, you know, to get from that masters to masters plus thirty, how much is that gonna be course-wise versus, you know, how much they're gonna make a year, and then how much they're gonna make at retirement? I mean, is that something that's really gonna be beneficial?
Well, it is the highest three years of retirement. And it boosts their monthly benefit, and that's what it's focused on.
But, but yeah, I mean, is that, is that, what is that, you know, twelve hundred dollars difference in just straight masters? Is that gonna be worth that? And how do you put it, how do you put it down in actual...
It'd be worth...
Yes, it's a value enough in the...
That's, that's the key item.
Yes.
If you're, if you're in year twenty, you know, that was one of the, I mean, I could say, when I went and got my doctorate started, I was a teacher at Fox. Because I was like, one, I was in school, but I was also like, I'm gonna maximize my return. If you're sitting in year twenty-five, that's where it becomes like, one, is I'm not gonna get return on my investment. It's really what it is.
And just two comments. When I look at this salary schedule with this added all the way in, to me, this is a regression as far as career, teaching field, because this is the way the salary schedules used to work. And we kind of negotiated to get rid of those, excuse me, to encourage people to go over quickly for that reason. And because, you know, there would be people that would just sit there. And, you know, not, and of course, the state of Missouri, you know, kind of encouraged us to, because within seven years for a period of time, you had to have a masters. So, you know, to me, adding all of this is not encourage them to do what's best for them. And we did, did, am I correct? That, when I came to Hillsborough and kind of became knowledgeable here, you had to do a degree program, and haven't we taken that requirement away?
Your masters.
Okay, so first of all, masters over.
Which, and that's in the MOU.
Correct.
That was in...
Okay, that's what I thought.
Anything after masters, you can just take general classes.
Classes that I wanna take.
So, and it doesn't even have to be necessarily graduate level class if it's...
It could be a computer class.
Related to, you know, to what you're doing. So what, and those classes are affordable and potentially even more, you know, depending on what you're going into. And, and I don't disagree as far as like with the bachelors, where you see where that ends at year sixteen, that goes back to that debate like that Director Stevenson said. You got seventeen or fourteen years left in doing this. Your return on investment should be there, and our salary schedule is designed, every eight credit hours, you're moving over.
I, I think we should, you know, really push to, to get them to move over and not, not, I mean, it's just my opinion, but not put that down. I mean, if we're, if we're trying to attract and retain the highest qualified, that's what gets them there, is, is moving over. I mean, obviously, they're better themselves, but they're better students, they're better in the district, they get education, so... I, I mean, my gut right now, I know we're not gonna quote on it right now, but is to not, not fill in the first, second, third, and fourth lanes, you know, to start with the masters and go from there.
And the thing is, like, if there was gonna be movement this year, it really had to be immediate. But also, as we talked about, is there's a lot of different ways to potentially address this. I mean, you know, we visit with our, the organizations instead we would, so I look at it as we're already started.
I think their intentions of bringing it to us was that that same formula goes on down. Eight twenty-nine all the way down?
That would be crazy.
I don't think so. I don't, I didn't get that, no.
The issue with that is if you think about...
Multiply that out. Well, that's why you move over, and you move over quickly.
Well, the blue column, where it's the four hundred dollars for the masters plus, to me, makes the most sense. I mean, that's where you benefit, you, you help out those who've been here for twenty-five years, you know, and they're, they're gonna be here till they retire if they're at that stage, because beneficially, that doesn't work out for them otherwise.
Can we do a hybrid? What I mean by that is, we have employees here who are, they're maxed out, we're gonna be, can we add one or two lanes, or one or two? And then as they get to their masters, you add more at the bottom? Does that make sense? With the bachelors, you add one or two more?
She's the one that had a couple of columns to each column.
Like go to eighteen instead of sixteen?
So those who are frozen have somewhere to go, but we are encouraging them to continue their education, because the return on investment is great there.
So take the bachelors instead from sixteen to eighteen?
Right. Take the bachelors from sixteen, seventeen.
What...
Well, what do you do with the person that has their bachelors and then being year twenty?
Twenty would be up to... That's their choice.
Whatever seventeen was, that's...
You know, it's, it's...
Forty each of them.
And that's the...
Was, was there, and I don't know if, I mean, because that Charles came up with this. I mean, does anybody know what the reasoning was for stopping at sixteen with lane one and seventeen? I mean, was that just arbitrary number? Did he do any research? It's a comulfer factor, you know? I mean, the numbers got...
But it did use to be bigger.
Did you see any reasoning?
It was spread out more.
Kelly, Kelly, shake her head, is Adam.
Bringing it up to seventeen or eighteen at the bachelors, and at the masters, take it the twenty-eight or something? I don't know, I don't know if there's a way for those who are maxed out, the bachelors, to give them something to help, but then as well, encourage them those young in their career to continue their education to see that return in their masters.
Well, as far as the, the young in the career, is you don't do anything with that. Because the thing is, if you scroll down here, I mean, you're talking, it's bachelors plus eight. Let's say the three classes. Oh, I mean, so three, three eight-week classes typically, and it's gonna move you over almost a thousand dollars. Is, and that's just moving here, you know, if you, most of our staff is in the masters. The bulk of our people are in the masters. And most people go there, and historically, they can stop. You know, because I don't...
Since we took the requirement off the table, that it had to be a degree program, more people taking courses to just simply improve themselves in an area that they... Was it just last year we took it off?
I don't know that a lot of people were, or even know that.
There might be an education page to take back to them.
The chip has the masters.
Right.
So now you're, there's a, they changed, it's roughly thirty employees of that, and then bachelors, they don't...
No, there's eighteen, oh, listen. So if you dial back, there's fourteen, no, excuse me.
If I'm reading, so masters may not have a degree.
You have, there's fourteen.
And they're just, they're...
We're gonna do it, I don't wanna wait till next year's negotiations. You really wanna wait till next year's negotiations to do this?
There was a lot here to...
But I want to make sure this is something you're doing as a board, it's not for negotiations. That's why the salary schedule, that if the staff negotiation's done, if you wanna come back and do a little bit more, it's up to you.
But we talked about it last year, and then it went by the wayside, and we didn't really talk about it anymore. And we had kind of forgotten about it until negotiations, it was brought up again. And I don't want that to happen again. Either we're gonna act on it, or we're not.
Can I actually, can I say something? So you had said that, and maybe you were just using this as an example, but you had said that four hundred looked like the best option to you.
To me.
So, and I'm just looking at the total cost right now, essentially twelve thousand versus the two hundred is just sixteen hundred. Were you looking at that just as the overall end figure, as far as what would be the most beneficial, or what were you...
I looked at both. I looked at how it would affect the teacher, plus how it would affect in the long term as well. I mean, thirty-six hundred dollars doesn't seem like a whole lot, you know? And you feel like, as a teacher, you feel like you've gotten something, a little bit more. You know, where two hundred dollars, that's kind of a, well, I did, I just divided it by twelve, and that's like sixteen dollars a month, and by the time you take taxes out of that, you're down to, yeah, and...
But yet, if, since it doesn't have to be a degree, they still have the choice to move over, now that they didn't have an impact, despite simply taking courses that will make you better.
What do you, what do you mean?
Did it have to be degrees?
It doesn't have to be degrees.
At year twenty-five, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, to move on over to masters plus fifteen, thirty, et cetera. You can move, still move over, it doesn't have to be degrees.
But you have to get approval for that, isn't that correct?
You get to take a class.
And it, it still stay, does the policy still say that it has to be a degree?
Yes, definitely.
It has to be a degree, I believe, in order to go to your masters. If you wanna go get a masters, you have to get approval for the degree. After your masters, and you earn your masters, you can go back and take additional credits and move over, is what Director Petrie says.
I'd like to look the policy for that, see what it says, because I don't know that teachers really know that. What do you think, ladies? Do you think most teachers are aware that it, that it doesn't necessarily have to be a program after masters?
We have told our members that, and they're aware of that.
Well... Okay. You told them that in an email or at a meeting?
Uh, yeah, a meeting.
So that means...
We told them to go relate that.
I know, but that still is gonna not necessarily be a very large number of people. Because your average attendance, I'm just trying to help them to see, is fairly, okay? So staff may not really be aware of that. Well, they should be, but, and, and that's why I wanted to know how was presented in... policy too. I haven't looked at that policy, so I don't know. It didn't, it didn't affect me anymore, so I don't know what it said. But your teachers at year twenty-five, a lot of them are not going to go get more hours college-wise if they're in masters or even masters plus fifteen, they're not going to-
Well, I agree if they're already down here, but again, if they're doing this and they have the long-range plan retirement, they're going to move on over up here and take advantage of it over there. One of the, and I, and I don't know if this is as per gender, but one of the things that I was involved in was actually offering credit-bearing classes on campus in areas that the district needed improvement.
Sure.
You know? And that's where we saw a lot of our staff take advantage and actually start popping over.
Yeah, we do have some classes that are held on campus, but I'm not for sure that they're in particular areas with degrees. Let me rephrase that. We offer classes, we offer classes, they can take them, however, it's not what the district thinks we need to be offering, it's what the college wants to do.
Well, at that time, you know, we did that because we wanted to improve a certain-
Sure, like if you want to have more people certified early childhood, you had early childhood classes.
I'm speaking technologically.
Well, I had just, when Eric asked me, I had looked at that blue column, looked at thirty-six hundred dollars, thought that's not a very big increase. It might be an incentive or encouragement to those teachers who are getting ready to retire in those next few years. And it's not a huge jump, and it still encourages those to get their masters. I don't know what you feel about this evening as far as making a decision or waiting and looking at it and talking about it next month or, because if, if we wait too long, we won't make a decision, we'll get forgotten, I'm afraid. And I don't want to do that. So.
I visited with, I think one of the organizations is more agrees that the masters, I'm going to stay with, say, past the masters.
Is ideal.
Would be ideal, would that be?
Yes.
Okay.
So the yellow line and the green line, they're saying just to, not an option.
See, I think that's a regression.
The green line is not-
Oh, the green, sorry, I didn't realize that.
However, I really don't think it's an option because it gives them sixteen bucks a month before tax. If you're going to do something, do something. Here's my point, Superintendent, if you, when you write about your people and you want to make a step forward, make a positive one, and to me, that, I agree, if you're going to do something, it needs to be around a four hundred dollar mark. I really don't think you can do the eight hundred and twenty-nine. I think the lasting impact on that financially could have a heavy burden on you in years coming.
Well, it takes more of your administration.
Yeah.
So.
Now, something to consider is the blue, it has an impact on administration.
It does.
It's not just teachers.
And how do administrators rank it? I know that you put that in your book.
There's a piece here.
Oh. Which side do we look at now?
And here's the thing, it's important to look at when you look at the ranking, is years of service is huge.
Yes.
I mean, that, that's huge as far as years of experience, and also within that, that is, um, some of the numbers in there, especially in the lower ones, may be split positions. So they're like, oh, wait a minute, that administrator is only making forty thousand. There may be, look further in the list, because it's titled with, this is ASBR reports. So similar, when we report on certain positions, if twenty thousand of it stayed out instead and-
Oh, this one.
That's what I'm saying. It's aggregated by some of the accounts, so.
Okay, well, I'd love to know what the board would prefer to do if you want to act this evening or if you want to table it and talk next month about it. Give you some time to look at it. But I feel like-
I'm comfortable with that. What are your answers?
To act this evening? So are you making motion for that?
I'm making a motion.
Okay.
To add four hundred at the masters.
To follow the blue line?
Correct.
Okay. Is there anybody that wants to make a second to that motion? Okay, so are we willing to, to discuss this next month? Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. All right, so we'll have to put this on as old business then?
Correct, it'll be old business. I think we make that note, please.
So take some time to think about this, make some contacts or whatever, do with, think it through, talk to Dr. Isaacson or Dr. Corman.
There's different scenarios, like, hey, I'd like to see this.
Right. That gets us to the end of our evening, so if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn with Mrs. Petrie and a second by Mr. Stevenson. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Okay, meeting adjourned.